Everybody, and welcome to the City of Sebastian Planning and Soning Commission and Local Planning Agency Meeting of Thursday, February 4th, 2021. First thing is to call to order, please, and let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Roth?
Here.
Mr. Simmons?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Present.
Mr. Simmons? I called Mr. Reyes.
Who'd you call?
Mr. Reyes.
Okay.
I probably should announce there is a couple of excused absences tonight. Mr. Kissabash is excused from tonight's meeting, and Mr. Christina will be voting in his place. There is one excused absence, I apologize for that.
I have to finish the roll call, please.
Go ahead.
Mr. Cristiano?
Present.
Mr. Yugen?
Yes, here.
And Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
Thank you.
It's hard to hear.
Okay, on our agenda tonight, there is no, there is no agenda modifications. We have approval of the meeting minutes from November 19th. Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
I have a change request.
Okay, we have a change request by Mr. Christina.
Okay, page five. I'm gonna make a notation down the bottom under my remarks concerning the delays at CR-12 and Schuman. I asked if the trains were going to be taken into account. He clearly stated that was a no, it's not a requirement of theirs. It's in the minutes at 7:29, I believe, with 30 seconds, if you'd like to get his exact response, but it was definitely not a yes. They don't take into account trains into delays at our lights. That said, I also took into account, I asked if you had reviewed those minutes, that in the future in that area, I would like the other end of Schuman Drive taken into account for traffic, especially the area down by Pelican Island School. I brought that up, and I don't see it in the minutes. I think it's important that we look fully at the impacts of any future developments in the areas that we're looking at. Thank you.
Okay, your changes will be noted. Any further changes? Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Yugen?
Should it be with the modification, however?
Yes. I would think so.
Yes.
I'll approve the minutes with the modification.
There's a new motion, and a second. Thank you, Mr. Yugen.
Who made the second, please?
Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next on our agenda is a quasi judicial hearing, public hearing. It's a site plan modification for Giant Oil, Inc., Mobile Oil, 617 U.S. Highway 1. It's a proposed demolition and reconstruction of a new 4,067 square foot convenience store with a fuel canopy, Commercial Riverfront, Soning District. Okay, will the applicant come up and make a presentation, please?
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, ma'am.
We still have to ask about ex parte.
I apologize.
And swear everybody in, and that list should be right in front of you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, would any commissioner like to disclose any ex parte communication?
No.
Hearing none? Okay, would you like to swear on the applicant, please, and anyone presenting factual information for this project? Please.
Do you have a turn now? Raise your right hand. Do you use, do you take your full names of the court order?
Dory Bosworth.
Robert Laurie.
Brett Neverill.
Okay, I swear for testimony or information you are about to provide before the planning and Soning Commission, quasi judicial hearing on February 4th, 2021, is true to or true, and method of truth of God, so firm.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Renon. Okay, will the applicant come up and make a presentation? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brett Neverill. I'm with Infinity Engineering Group, represent Giant Oil. We also have Joe Peterson here. He is the construction manager for Giant Oil. He'll also be the one who is actually overseeing the construction of this facility, this project, and also the maintenance of, future maintenance for this project. We are here today to ask approval for the raise and rebuild of the existing mobile facility. The existing mobile facility was built in 1988. It's roughly 972 square feet. It has eight fuel inpositions or four gas dispensers. It's currently on a septic drain field design. It is connected to potable water, and the property is located in the Riverfront Overlay District, so our proposed design does comply with the overlay district requirements. We have worked extensively with staff to make sure that what we present today is as close as possible to meet the LDC requirements. Our proposal is for a 4,067 square foot convenience store with 12 fuel inpositions or six gas dispensers. We are proposing a sewer lift station in lieu of the septic drain field. We will connect to the Indian River Forest Main. It's actually located within our property, within a 20-foot easement along the western boundary. Access will... Could you bring the site plan up?
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, so we are proposing two access points. Right now, the property has two access on U.S. Highway 1. One of the, one, the driveway that's closest to the intersection on U.S. 1 will be closed. The one that is located further south will be modified. This permit has gone through DOT review, and the permit is approved. We also will be modifying the existing driveway on Sebastian Boulevard. It does exist today, and we are modifying it, basically decreasing the size of it and increasing the radiuses for easier in and out movements. We are proposing pedestrian connection to the U.S. Highway 1. We are also installing a sidewalk on U.S. Highway 1, so that is, you know, we are going to be constructing that as part of our project. We are providing, proposing a dry detention pond at the rear of the prop, you know, behind the convenience store, as reflected here. We know that was one of the concerns that was brought up in the staff report by the city engineer. This pond will incorporate what we call an underdrain system. This underdrain system is an approved method by St. John's, and it has been for decades. Basically, this underdrain system will provide, or it'll provide drawdown for the retention pond. So as, you know, we're holding water quality, everything would be, so you have water quality, and that is designed to percolate through the ground. So this type of system is designed to make sure that our pond will always stay dry within 72 hours. And if you go down to the site that exists today, you'll see a bunch of overgrowth in the retention pond. That's because that pond has failed, and because of the seasonal high water table, it's having a hard time to draw down, meaning to recover, to get rid of the stormwater within the pond. So this type of underdrain system is very expensive, is very detail oriented, and is an approved method. It's been reviewed by St. John's, it's been reviewed by Florida Department of Transportation, and permits are, you know, they are approved. There was a comment about maintenance, we are, you know, the city engineer made a comment about, you know, annual inspections. We are in agreement, we can, we can complete annual inspections. You know, this system has the ability to, you know, clean it. There is, there are notes, details, both inside the plan set and also within the drainage calculations, that tell you what to do in case it needs to be cleaned. But this type of system is very visual. If you go out there and you see cattails growing, or if you see any type of vegetation growing, that means the system is not working as designed, and it'll be a good indication that it needs to be cleaned. But, Joe, there was a condition saying that we would do an annual inspection. So we are in agreement, you know, with the cities, with the city engineer recommendation of an annual inspection by the professional engineer. So we hope, you know, that will alleviate the concern of the underdrain system. But if anybody doesn't understand, I'd be happy to explain in further detail. I had brought some stuff with, actually, to show, but basically, it's designed to draw down the water. So anywhere in the vicinity of the pond is going to take, if the seasonal high, seasonal high water table during certain periods of the year gets too high, it'll artificially draw it down, and that'll allow the pond to recover. And again, this is an approved method through the St. John's River Water Management Design We are asking for a few waivers. You know, this is a challenging site. It's narrow, it's long, it's been there since 1988, it's an ISO. We want to tear down, we want to rebuild a nice, big, beautiful facility. Joe's willing to invest in the community, so we do need a few waivers. One, we're asking for a waiver for the gas canopy. Our competitors have, you know, large fascias, we're asking for a medium fascia. You know, standard gas station fascia is 36 inches. We're asking for a little shorter, so we can actually have an ID sign, you know, what we call a legend on the sign. So like Speedway has two, you know, two, two legends that say Speedway. We're requesting an increase in the fascia so we can have the word "mobile" on both the Sebastian and U.S. 1 facades. There are a few landscape waivers we're also asking for. This site's challenged, and like I said earlier, along the west property line, we have a 20-foot easement that's dedicated to Indian River. We are not permitted to put trees inside this easement, or either understory or canopy trees. It's just simple ground cover, so we're not able to, you know, take advantage of this, of the western boundary. We also have overhead power lines on U.S. 1. That's also limiting how many, you know, it's also limiting the fact that we can't put canopy trees underneath the power lines. We also have a larger retention pond on here, so, you know, we have less room to install trees. And as you can see by this landscape plan, it is extensive, even with the request for waivers. We're having 91 trees. We're installing 51 canopy trees, 40 understory trees, 949 shrubs, and some other miscellaneous plant material. In our opinion, we've gone, we tried to do, to the best extent to meet the code requirement, so we are asking for a few waivers, as, you know, Robert will talk about. But when you look at the site plan, I mean, this is going to be lush, and there's a lot of trees on the site, a lot of ground cover. I'm not sure where else we could stick a tree. And you also have to remember, too, this is a gas station. We have conduits everywhere, we have electrical everywhere, we have petroleum lines, so got to keep that in mind, too. So we're hoping, you know, when you take a look at this landscape and you see how many trees are out here, you'll be okay with the waiver requests. Architectural, you know, my group has worked hand in hand with Robert to meet the overlay design standards. Do you want to flip to, I mean, I, we can, oh, do we, should I go up there? I didn't know, I was, I'm sorry. I didn't know I could go up there. Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't realize I could go up there. I apologize for that. But I mean, we've worked, we've worked hand in hand with Robert, trying to come up with a building elevation that would both complement the overlay district and also complement the neighborhood. I think we did a great job working cohesively with staff. So right here, this is, this is our canopy right here. We are going to wrap the columns in stone to match the building. We are adding the stainless steel, excuse me, the stainless steel roof, which will also complement and match the building, but we are asking for the increased in fascia height. That's an old one, isn't it?
Yes.
That's not the correct, yeah, that's not the correct elevation.
You should let them drive.
Well, I brought a zip.
Unfortunately, I brought, I brought, I brought the project, so. And they might have, but this isn't, you know, this is similar, but we're asking innovation to be expanded up to the top of the sign. Because of the sign, and you wanted it to be walkable, plenty.
Yeah, I want to be able to market our, I want to have fair market share, fair market marketing, and be able to compete with Subway when you come down the street and be able to see the word "mobile" versus "Speedway," so we are asking for that waiver.
Right. So, yeah. I see the sign there, I just want my canopy.
Right, and, you know, typically, and I've done gas my entire career, typical canopy fascia is 36 to 42, so we're not asking anyone to hear that. And this is actually a smaller mobile sign than the standard mobile.
Excuse me, point of order. Mr. Chair, when you talk, if you can put on, because she can't hear you.
So, Robert, how do I switch? It's not usually, arrow up or down.
I'm done talking, I just asked him to come up and make his presentation. Thank you.
There's only one page in that file.
Well, I do, I do apologize. I had, I had, you know, a thumb drive with all my presentations, so. But let me just say this, you know, I work with Robert, Robert, you know, my team work, we have architects on staff. We came up with a design that we think meets the goals of the overlay district, and we're proud of it. I think this is going to be a great project. I think it's going to increase your tax revenue, tax base, it's also going to, how many, how many people on staff at once?
A man, one, three.
So it's going to increase the number of, you know, employees you have on here, it's going to provide services like fuel for your boats that others don't have, it's going to improve your gateway entrance. I think it's a win-win, in our opinion, and we're investing in the community, and we're here to ask for your, your support. We do need a few waivers, but we think they're justified.
Okay, thank you. Staff, would you like to present your findings and analysis, please?
Sure. Good evening. You have in front of you the staff report. The staff report's made up of 23 items related to the approval of the site plan. This project's a culmination of many months of work by both our staff and Infinity Engineering, and many of the items, as you go through the report, have already been provided for or they're just not applicable. But what I'd like to bring to your attention is under number 19, which is additional considerations. Under 19, stormwater calculations have been received with the application reviewed by the city engineer. This system utilizes an underdrain system that is recognized and approved by St. John's Water River Management District, but not typically used in the City of Sebastian. City engineers expressed some concerns regarding this type of system and the increased vigilance and maintenance required to keep the proposed underdrain system operational. The city engineer has recommended that the commission mandate the system is inspected by the city annually and certified for maintenance and operation from a qualified engineer as part of that required inspection. The existing freestanding sign will be removed, modified, and replaced at the time or near location. It is unknown if the sign will meet the size or height requirements at the time of the replacement. Therefore, staff has asked that all signs undergo a separate permit, not a part of this site plan review. New and existing signs shall match the building architecture by way of color, shape, height, meet current land development code standards. As alluded to, the applicant is requesting a series of waivers from the Riverfront District Landscape Code for the following items. Number one, relief from the proposed fuel canopy fascia limitation from 12 inches to 20 inches, as found in Article 21, Section 54, dash 4, dash 21, point 8, point 5, V3. The applicant is requesting that the fascia of the proposed fuel canopy is allowed to be extended to, to allow for a corporate supply to pleak mobile sign that is 18 inches in height. The applicant is not allowed to have an internal light for the sign, nor can they use channel lettering for the fuel canopy in the overlay district. A view of other fuel canopies in and along the Riverfront Corridor have similar sized and type signage that is unlit, therefore, the request would seem in character and reasonable with other fuel canopies found in the district. If approved, the applicant would construct a fuel canopy that has a 20-inch fascia with the required mansard roof above that would match the material finishes found in the proposed, found on the proposed convenience store structure. Number two, as a reduction in the foundation planting requirement by 25%, is found in 54, dash 4, dash 21, point 8, point 7, C2. Under the Land Development Regulations, foundation plantings are required to cover approximately 40% of all building facade areas. The applicant is seeking relief of the required landscape material by 25% of the total requirements based upon the limitation of usable space around the proposed building for such plantings. The configuration of the building, perimeter sidewalks, and other architectural elements, as proposed, does not lend itself easily to foundation plantings. Other factors also include existing and proposed utilities and drainage on site. Applicant does propose larger and generally more expensive types of planting in these areas, but would require a reduction of the foundation planting by 25%. Number three, a reduction of 14 canopy trees and a reduction of 15 understory trees, based on the calculations supplied by the landscape architect. 14 canopy, 14 canopy trees and 15 understory trees for the entire site cannot be planted due to constraints of the site. There exists a large easement with a buried concrete pipe along the western property line that is controlled by Indian River County Utilities that severely limits the number of trees that normally could be planted. Applicant has made a concerted effort to increase the numbers of hedges and shrubbery used on the limitations of the usable area found for tree plantings, but must remove existing invasive pepper trees from the site. They're also proposing to keep the existing mature canopies on the western boundary line. With, with regard to understory trees, the applicant has provided a greater amount of planting area for the surrounding parking and landscape areas. Staff feels that adequate steps have been taken that satisfy the landscaping requirement based on the unique challenges and physical limitations that exist on site. For the waiver requests, the commission may choose to accept the waiver as is, provide alternatives, or deny the request based on the testimony of the applicant and staff findings. Staff conclusion, the site is consistent with the comprehensive plan, river overlay district, and the land development code. Recommendation is as follows, hold a public hearing regarding the proposed site improvements. Staff recommends approval of the site plan modification subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant shall have the proposed underdrain stormwater retention pond and its components inspected and reported annually, under supervision from a certified professional engineer experienced in this type of system. Consulting engineer shall certify the system is operational to the city engineer, subject to the required City of Sebastian forms, and for review and approval, honored before September 30th of each year. The applicant must execute any remedial efforts or maintenance as required by the city engineer. Number two, the existing proposed signage shall be reviewed and approved under separate permits apart from the site plan review. Signs shall match the building architecture by way of color, shape, height, and meet current land development code standards. Number three, approve the request for landscape waivers as allowed under Section 54, dash 4, dash 21, point 6, for the reduction of foundation plantings by a total of 25% and a reduction of the required number of canopy and understory trees. And number four, approve the, the request for an architectural waiver for the canopy fascia to exceed the height limitation from 12 inches to 20 inches, provided that the proposed signage is to meet the requirements of the River Overlay District. That being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Warren. Okay, commissioners, our current asked questions of the applicant or staff. I'm going to start with Mr. Roth down here, please.
Thank you. I noticed that there will be an addition of two pumps, dual pumps, really, so making a total of 12 pumps, is that correct?
That is correct.
12 pumping stations?
That's correct.
Okay. I was puzzled, I could not find on drawing CO201, the stormwater structure. I think I see it on the property, but I, I just couldn't find it because there's a mention of it being improved, and I just don't know where it is and how it's going to impact any visual sight lanes. I think it was listed as number 31.
Mr. Roth, what, what specific question? What do you, what do you?
The location of item 31 on this particular drawing, CO201, it's mentioned here, but I cannot find it anywhere on the drawing.
It's, it's, it's right here, sir. So we're going to be replacing this structure right here, but, so that, that, this is, this is our historic point of discharge to DOT. There's a pipe that goes there now, the ponds are over here, so we're going to be mutilating these two structures.
There is a structure there now.
We're going to need to see whatever you guys, if we can show it on the board here.
Yeah, Mr. Neverill. Yeah. Mr. Neverill, we definitely need you to speak in the mic for the record, because it's quasi digital hearing.
You can put your paperwork on there and kind of point at it. Yeah. Mr. Roth, are you talking about the structure and the existing retention pond?
Near the, near the detention pond, and it's also near a light pole. I see, I'm a reed dropper.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about the inlet inside of the DOT, there's actually a ditch there, but, so when you actually come down from the intersection of Sebastian, U.S. 1, there is no curb and gutter, it just goes in the west side.
I can't hear you.
Is that mic on?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear, tired of the mask, and I'm deaf.
Yeah, okay, so what's going on out here? Is, is right now, this, this section of U.S. 1 does not have curb and gutter, it actually goes south to an open ditch. So our point of discharge was to a structure basically in the edge of payment. So we're going to be installing a new type of curb inlet, and that's what keynote number 31 is. It's, our asphalt structure will, will go into the DOT, and then we'll be installing a new type of curb inlet.
Just to follow up with Joe, this is something you coordinate with the state, that's a state route, or?
Correct, yes. Permits are, permits are issued, I, you know, I, yeah.
So it's actually going to be part of the gutter, or the curb?
Correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We are installing curb and gutter all the way down this road.
Right.
Yes, to where it ends, yes, yes, sir. And this has been reviewed, and it has been approved, and, you know, every, all permits are in hand.
And no sight lanes are jeopardized at all with the structure that you're talking about?
All we're doing is improving the right of way, we're installing sidewalk, and we're doing, installing curb and gutter to a point, per DOT's requirement. Because as you go south, there's no curb and gutter, and it's open swale.
So it's going to flow down from, from north, south to the curb and gutter inlet?
Yes, sir.
That discharges into your retention areas?
We discharge.
Wait, there is a structure there now?
Yes.
It's labeled I-4 on the survey, existing survey?
Correct, yes.
Is that about the same location where you're proposing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
There also on the, the comments, there's two bicycle racks planned, and this area across from the park, well, I'm sorry, one bicycle rack for two bicycles. And that's just to the, would be the right, right-hand side, if we look at the drawing of the main entrance into the convenience store. And my point is, I think right across the street from the park and that area is just going to grow in terms of usage and more, more people riding bicycles in that area, and I did hear something, in fact, of someone starting a bicycle rental, that two slots, there may not be enough.
But it's not really, too. If you look here, you know, you have, you have the ability to go in one, two, three, four, five, this is what we call a ribbon, ribbon bicycle path, bicycle rack, and so you have multiple spots, you know, every loop you can, you can put a bicycle into. So it's, it's not just one or two, it's, it's actually five.
What's the dimension between the center lines of those loops?
Nine edges, enough to get a tire in.
Enough to get a tire in, but then, then you're fighting with handlebars. Well, well.
I mean, this is very common, they have, what, this is like what they call RB5, RB7, so these type of bike racks is, you know, what you see out there. I mean, I mean, would you object to, to build a larger bike rack?
No, I mean, that's the only other thing we need to do, is add a double bike rack, but we have those in over 60 of our locations throughout the state. If you're going to testify, you gotta come up. Hold on, hold on. Take your name, the record is.
Joe Peterson. We use those bicycle racks at over 60 of our locations throughout the state of Florida, and even, I have a new site in Clearwater that's been open for three months with that same bicycle rack, and there's three in five bicycles there, sometimes on Saturdays, and no one has a problem getting the bikes in or out, and I haven't had any of the customer complaints. They're happy that we've put in the new store.
Are they near a city municipal park?
They're near the causeway of Clearwater. They're near the causeway of Clearwater, and that has over fifty-five thousand people go by on a daily basis, between bicycles, foot traffic.
Well, it's on that trail, too.
Yeah, there's a ten-foot wide city trail, and we're on the trail.
Yeah.
And next to the city park, so they're very effective.
I mean, we feel it's enough, I mean.
I don't wanna belabor the point, I just asked the question. We'll see how the Commissioners feel about that. What is the reason for the sidewalk closure, and which one is it? Is it due to the construction you're talking about, and for how long would that sidewalk be closed?
Well, I mean, first of all, the Sebastian sidewalk goes to a railroad, so we will be closing the Sebastian sidewalk while we construct the driveway apron, yes, sir, and we will be doing that. But I don't know, I mean, is there a heavy traffic load for pedestrians? I mean, they're crossing the railroad tracks, and I think the sidewalk doesn't even go across the railroad tracks, doesn't go up to the railroad tracks.
It does.
Is it the one on Sebastian Street, or is it on US one?
It is one of the busiest sidewalks, especially during the Fourth of July and all the different parades and stuff at the park.
Well, I mean, we can certainly, Joe, I mean, Joe, when he's on, our general contract can certainly make it a requirement to maintain the access as long as possible, I mean, to build the driveway.
I think that's typical, you have to provide maintenance of traffic, pedestrians and cars when you close anything off, so.
We typically ask for the MOT index six hundred details for when you close a sidewalk, or do any kind of work in the right of way.
Do you have any MOT plans prepared for shutting it down?
They are part of the plan, yes.
Yes, sir.
So we will minimize, to answer your question, we'll minimize closure, I mean, there will be a point where we have to construct the driveway and lay asphalt, so that might be closed for a day or two, but we will certainly work with staff and the inspectors to make sure it's maintained, and I would assume we would not be doing this on the weekend during peak hour.
For a holiday.
For a holiday, yes.
Well, it's certainly gonna take some time with construction going on, but you're aware of.
They will do like a temporary path, I mean, it won't, they do temporary paths, sometimes you apply wood out, just to get across the lime rock base.
Well, as Mr. Reyes said, that's a concern with the holidays, and that park is very highly used.
Understood, and we'd like to get in, get going, so we can build before the, you know, the seasonal rains get here, too, so.
Okay, I have one other question of the city engineer, maybe you can answer, Mr. Lawrence, and that is the grade that we're looking at, as it comes down from the parking area down to where the sidewalk is, and then finally off to the street on US one. Is that compatible with what we would expect in an area where there's gonna be a lot of potential foot traffic, not year round, but at particular high seasonal points?
So if you're asking about the finished floor elevations for those areas, we worked extensively with the engineer. We have our own requirements, not related to pedestrian traffic, but actually related to emergency vehicle access, and we require a slope at or below five percent. So the short answer to a long question is simply that we feel like it'll be traversable for both pedestrian traffic and for cars to access onto and off of the site.
Okay, thank you.
And we did work with the fire marshal to make sure that he was in agreement with this, because this is a challenging site, you have elevations of fourteen, and one road with five on the other.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why I asked the question, just to make sure we're going.
But the fire marshal has blessed us.
Yeah. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Roth, Ms. Cottenberg.
I don't have any questions, I just say thank you for making a vast improvement to that corner, I look forward to seeing it completed.
I just draw it, you build it.
It has been an eyesore for a very long time, thank you.
And we're ready to invest.
Mr. Simmons?
I do have a comment and a question, how soon can demo start? And it just shows that you can make a silk purse out of a pig's ear.
To answer your question, Joe is on me to get permit, so we need to, you know, once we get approval here, I can submit for building permit. So the answer to your question is, as soon as I can get the building out and approved, then we're gonna be under construction.
Thank you.
Mr. Carter?
Again, I'd like to thank you for investing in the community, I think that'll be a big improvement there. It has, as Ms. Cottenberg mentioned, have been an eyesore for a long time. I stop in there on occasion, and do get gas, but being across from the park, that doesn't necessarily put our best foot forward. I would like to make a comment, and this is not directed at the applicants, but I guess maybe towards staff, it seems like the last few plans that have come to us have either wanted variance or modification, it seems to be happening more and more, and, you know, the reason why we have these things in place is for a good reason, as far as what we're expecting our community to look like. So I just wanna make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Christina?
Okay, here we go. I'm a frequent patron of a mobile gas station.
We hope you continue.
And you do already take care of boats over there, because you're one of the three gas stations in the city, let me turn this on, oh, it is on, that have the ethanol-free gas.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the landscape plan, hopefully, I see all shrubs to the north, not quite sure how my chair went down, but I'll figure that out. We don't have any trees on the north side of the driveway on Route one. They seem to be on the south side, which is, I'm fine with that, on the landscape plan.
We have trees here, here, and over here, yes.
Not on the north side, I just, I'm concerned about line of sight when you exit the gas station.
You're talking about the east side? US one is on the east.
Well, yeah, US one's on the east, north of this driveway that exits onto one. In other words, there's an exit here, David, that goes out onto Route one, right?
There's gonna only be one.
If you ask for the park, is that gonna be, this is still an entrance and exit on Route one.
Yes, it's a right in, right out, into our facility, is that what you're asking?
Right.
Yes, sir. That's all DOT would approve, yes.
So, I'm referring to, if you're facing the building from Route one, off to the right, I see shrubs on the landscape plan, I see canopy trees to the left, which is south, that driveway.
Those are crate barrels, yes, sir, because of the power, yes.
Mm-hmm, no, I'm fine with that, I'm just, I wanna make sure people that are pulling in and out of there.
Yeah, there is a line of sight.
Can be seen, or can see.
There are sight triangles, it was reviewed by DOT, I mean, yes, sir, I, yes.
All right, the only other thing I wanna impress upon you, it doesn't lay out where the ethanol-free pump's gonna go.
I didn't know where it happened.
But right now, right now, I've gotta pull almost out onto Route one, when you got a truck and a trailer behind you, you are hanging way down.
Yes, sir, and that was one of the big issues with this site, it's so narrow, we're trying to build a modern station.
Yeah, you're almost fifty feet long there.
We gotta be competitive.
I'm blocking the driveway from people getting out of there, trying to get gas in the back of my boat.
And that's one reason why we did these angled islands, this is a lot more expensive to build, specifically the canopy structure, they're called speed islands, so it's designed to help you get in and get out longer design vehicles.
So perhaps positioning the ethanol-free pump way off to the right, to get out on Route twelve.
They're on the outside, yes, sir.
I see you're putting in new tanks underground?
Yes, sir.
With this, so, and that's it for my comments, so I'm looking forward to it, 'cause I happen to like the molten gasoline, and it's great for my boat, you know, it'd just be nice for it to be a little easier getting it on there.
Well, that's what happens in nineteen eighty-eight station.
It's all about me. It's all about me.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you, Mr. Christina, Mr. Hugman.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. You said, once a year, an engineer is going to inspect this system.
You're on the wrong.
Okay, who puts the cost for that engineer? Who pays for that?
Giant Oil will pay, my organization, they come out here and walk the site inspected.
And how long do you think that's gonna go on? Do you have any idea?
Let me just say this, I mean, this site is three miles from here, the city engineer, the city inspectors, they can go by the site, and if there's any type of vegetation growing at the bottom of this pond, you know the underdrain is not working. It's very visible, very visible to see it. So I don't know how to address that, we will, you know, we will, you know, we'll, I mean, back in the day, like, the water management groups would send the owner a letter saying, okay, it's been eighteen months, you need to go do an inspection, do the inspection, provide the engineering certification, that's no longer happening, so I will commit to it.
The city engineers ask them.
So the city engineer will be asking for, they have a specific form that they are going to be looking for on or about September thirtieth of each year, certifying that system.
Okay.
If they don't get that form, they're gonna be calling somebody and wanting that form turned in.
Okay.
Also, if, as a recommended condition, if it is a condition of site plan approval, there are codes in the land development code that we can, you have to continually keep your site plan in, up to date. So this would be a violation of their site plan, and also through code enforcement, we could, you know, if there was a failing system required to get it fixed.
And the only other question I have is, how are you gonna control the hazardous runoff? You know, if you get a gas spill, well, you know, 'cause you're gonna have gas spills and oil spills, no matter where you're at, how does that, how do you control that?
I mean, that's the whole point, that's really the whole point of the dry retention pond, you know, it goes in there and it filtrates through the ground prior to discharge into the state water. I mean, that, the weir is, weir in your skimmer is what's supposed to prevent any type of sediment, pollution, or waste from going up and over, so.
Okay, all right. Other than that, looks good to me, so I'm done.
One question I have.
Mr. Alvarez.
Thank you. Have you guys considered any electric stations? As a matter of fact, I was gonna mention that this evening here, my Commissioner Matters, that a lot of electric cars are coming in the area, and there's, that I've seen, there's no.
We, to be honest with you, we talked about that, I mean, because it is coming, and it may be the point where we just plummet, I work all over the country, and we are doing that, we may not be installing now, I'm building a branch for Bank America down in Port Everglades, and we're not installing day one, but we're running the infrastructure, the conduit is for future, so.
That'd be something to consider, now that you guys do it.
Yeah.
You'll be the first one in town.
Yeah.
That's something, 'cause, as a matter of fact, my son loves a Tesla, he was just asking.
Seven eleven, you know, seven eleven has, you know, seven eleven has that, they just completed California, the move into.
But here, we don't have one in town.
Well, it's only on the interstate location.
Right, but I'm.
And it's funny, 'cause they're not just installing one, they're installing four, because you have all different types of charging stations, you know, Tesla.
But that was my main concern, something to consider, I mean, now that you got all that money involved, I mean.
That's one of the problems, is what we're having, Brett was saying, is there's so many types right now, there's four basic types, but there's actually twelve different types, so now you can't just pull up an electric car to any charging station.
Got it.
You could just eliminate Tesla, and then you only have three.
Yeah, that's one of the challenges, like, the US government needs to deal with, you know, you need to put one type of charging station, instead of like, 'cause, you know, Tesla, and Tesla has.
Oh, so you have different?
Yeah, Audi has an app now, if you're gonna go somewhere, you plug in, and they'll tell you where to go, but, like Joe's saying, I mean, seven eleven's investing on the interstate locations, they're putting, they're putting American, they're putting German, they're putting.
They're putting four.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's twelve.
So like, on a site like this, it's, let's be honest, it's tight, it's small.
No, no, I know, I know, I don't want you, but at least the most common one, I guess, something.
I don't even know what that is.
I don't know, right?
We looked at doing it into the parking spots, actually, but because of the twelve different types right now, and if the federal government would make it a little more constrained, and get it to where there's only four, I would put it at every station.
And it is a dollar, it is an investment, you know, this costs several hundred for seven eleven to do it, because you have to have a different, you know, it's a different current, different voltage.
Yes, of course.
So you have a transformer, different service, so it's not something that costs like ten grand, well, like a hundred grand, so, you know, that's where I'm finding my get, okay, which one do I select, Tesla, American, German?
That's it, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
No more questions?
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of questions.
I do get to ask them also.
I'm not very bad. The inspection of the dry retention area, I understand that you will be taking care of any remedial efforts to fix it, but what if it just fails, and it needs to be totally reconstructed?
Then it needs to be totally reconstructed.
That is on you guys also.
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's kinda how I read the staff recommendations for that.
And there's notes inside the drawings that reflect that, too.
Okay.
As far as the curb, curb and gutter along US one, I don't understand why they always stop at the structure and not continue it.
Because as a.
Your property continues.
It goes down to an open swale.
If you don't, where the gutter is there, then the runoff is really gonna go on the swale area and that other area.
Well, correct, 'cause, because it's all sloping that way.
Well, you have a little bit of a high point there, where the sidewalk changes the direction, but as far as the pavement, you don't, it's all gonna start coming down.
Well, let me just say this, we don't make this decision, DOT tells, DOT is.
F dot actually stopped you at the structure and then want you to continue the rest of the property line?
F dot direct.
District four?
Yeah, I mean, we build what DOT tells us to build, it's not the other way around, I mean.
Okay.
So we did the same.
I see this all the time, 'cause I'm a surveyor, and it doesn't go in the structure.
I mean, we're not trying.
All the joint is gonna flow into that swale area.
That's what they.
And very little water's gonna go in the structure.
But if I believe, from memory, there's a.
It'll keep your dry retention pond dry, that's for sure.
But.
So that was a common.
We do the same due diligence, I met with, I met with staff, when we first started this project, I met with St. John's, I met with DOT in person, and this is what they directed us to do, we put it in pen and paper, well, autocad, but.
Do you have, what is the water table come up to in that area of the pond?
About six.
About a six?
About a, it's about six on our property, and that's where the pond.
That's right, we're way up here now, I'm thinking of down, south, where I do most of my work.
When you go to the site now, the pond is in poor condition, and the grades range from five point seven to six point five.
So your bottom is right at the max tight height.
That's the point of the underdrain.
Yes, sir.
You know, to answer your question, if we had more property, we would've sloped higher and raised the site higher, but because this is so narrow, and because of trying to get emergency vehicles in and out, I could only raise the driveway so much.
Okay.
On the west side, you know, up against the railroad tracks, the property there.
Yep.
So towards the rear of the property, you have some sidewalks that come into the building area.
That is electrical closet.
Well, I wasn't gonna ask that, I wonder, I was just curious why the design didn't continue a walk, so that it feeds into the sidewalk coming off of Sebastian Boulevard, so pedestrians could come through there, instead of having to cross the driveway right there.
Well, it gets down to, this site is already extremely tight, losing five feet.
That's what, a handicap parking you created over there?
Yeah, yes, sir. I mean.
That's your tanks, too, there, are they not?
Yeah, the only place that we could fit the tanks on here, to get a tanker in and out, is the location that that shows, which is adjacent to the western property line.
Okay. I have no further questions. I have a very nice set of plans.
Thank you.
I like your project, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Ooh, my chair just dropped on me. Sorry, guys. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the floor up to anybody in favor of this plan, who wishes to speak in favor of. Seeing nobody on the floor, I'd also like to ask if there's anybody in Zoom that would like to.
There is no one on Zoom.
There's no one on Zoom, wow, this is gonna go quick. All right, anybody in opposition of it? I don't think the applicant is the only person here, this one. Okay, we're moving on. The applicant asked, okay. Staff, will you finalize this for me?
We would ask that you, the board, consider an approval of the site plan with the recommendation that it's with the staff report, that's been enclosed with all the accompanying drawings, elevations, and pertinent information related to the site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and staff report and all attachments.
Okay. This time, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the site plan modification, lots one through five inclusive block six, Edgewater Park, according to plat thereof, as recorded in plat book one, page twenty-three of the public. in Plat Book One, page twenty-three of the public records of the Indian River County Survey, or RC Survey for full description, with in addition to four recommendations for conditions that staff recommends.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Where'd that come from? Who seconded it?
Mr. Simmons.
Simmons. I'm sorry, Mr. Simmons. Alright, we have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yugen.
Yes.
Miss Kiff, Mr. Roth.
Yes.
Ms. Cottonburg?
She's not voting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Cottonburg is, is an alternate member. Mr. Christina is voting in. Mr. Kissavos, please.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roth.
Mr. Roth.
He said yes.
I already voted, yeah.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Christina.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mr. Reyes.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Unanimous. Thank you. Motion passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Very nice project.
Thank you, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
So, you know, one of the guys here wants you to start ASAP.
Yeah, it's warming up. Just a quick question before you guys go. I'm sorry I didn't ask it before. How long of a construction period do you anticipate here?
Approximately five months, whether permitted.
So, you're ready to get started.
Uh, tomorrow.
Okay, so we'll have it for the Fourth of July, your promise, right?
Hey, we got some push of the building department.
Okay.
Yeah, the building department, good, didn't look.
Mr. Loring's ready to go.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Alright. Well, so, I, do I need to close this public quasi-judicial hearing now?
Yes.
Yes. At this time, I am closing the quasi-judicial hearing. Okay, we're on to item number seven, unfinished business. Say it's none. Do we have any public input on any other items, other than the printed ones on the agenda? Seeing nobody from the public and nobody on Zoom, I'm just going to, we'll move on from that. New business? No new business? Commissioner Matters. Yearly, we do an election of a chairperson and vice-chairperson. So, it is time to elect a new chairperson or vice-chairperson. So, we're looking for votes? I lost my paperwork on that. I'm sorry.
May I nominate Mr. Reyes for chairman?
We have one nominee on the floor. Anybody else?
I nominate Mr. Reyes for chair and vice-chair, Mr. Roth.
Okay, so, so far, we have two for Mr. Reyes for, for chair, and one for Mr. Roth for vice-chair. Commissioners? Anybody else?
I think we voted this way.
Well, we did vote.
Yeah.
Well, I don't want to throw any of your other names in there?
No.
It's all yours.
You guys are it.
You're it. Okay. Alright, let's take a vote on this. Roll call? Do we need to do a roll call? Can we just do it unanimous, uh?
Yeah, if I can, I think you're unopposed, so I think you're it.
Yeah, okay.
Both you and the vice-chair.
So, I will serve another term as chair of the Planning and zoning commission, and Mr. Roth will serve together again. Look forward to a good year this year. Looks like it's going to be a busy one.
Support your noble and worthy efforts all year long. Yes, sir.
Aye, aye.
Good deal.
There we go. Alright.
Thanks a lot, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is it because I move them along faster than meetings, or what is it?
Let's move a little bit faster, come on.
City Attorney Matters, Mr. Anon.
Mr. Chair?
I do have-
And we have to approve that vote?
Roth had the question, I think.
One, one question of, what's kind of all the back burner waiting to come this way?
In terms of new projects?
I was going to ask that, but yeah.
We have a, the Halo project is coming for a building expansion. You'll see that probably this year. The, there's a subdivision up there, the Sebastian Highlands Unit Seventeen Edition, that might come through this year as well. That's a pretty big one. Trying to think what else.
Yeah, those are the, those are the only formal applications that we have.
We have a lot of stuff in the, in the mill, but nothing official.
Okay.
Anything going on with the old firehouse garage?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
No, but I can, I can let you know, the property had gone up to auction. I'm not sure if that sale has gone through, but that was a non-conforming use in the triangle.
Right.
And so, our code says that you can, you grandfather in approximately a hundred and eighty days, so that is in March coming up, that, so if there isn't, if the business doesn't come back in with another business tax receipt or open up, it would lose its grandfather in and become a non-conforming use. So, the vehicular maintenance could not be a permitted use anymore in that building. Not to say that the building couldn't be used for something else, restaurant, or, you know, can change the use, but the vehicular maintenance would lose its, its nonconformity rights, and it would have to cease.
Which building was that again?
The firehouse garage.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask some questions. Could they, could the new owner reapply for that, though?
Yes, within that one hundred and eighty days. If they come in to, you know, continue on with that type of business.
But if they go past that, could they, they can reapply for nonconformity?
Correct.
Okay.
But there was, there were some nonconformities with that site, too. They had kind of fenced in the property to the north-
Yeah.
-without formally expanding the business, which they can't, because they're nonconforming use. So, you know, we're trying to, we hope that the new owners reach out to us, so we can help them bring that site into compliance. They strictly just the firehouse garage site is what can be used for the vehicular maintenance. It still has a residential use per zoning to the north, so, and they can't expand, because they're nonconforming use in the triangle.
That's, um-
I think we kind of got misled at the beginning of that one.
Pardon me?
I said, I think we, we were a little bit misled from the very get-go on that one, from the first time it came before us.
Has that site been an environmental risk assessment done on it? It's, I mean, it was a maintenance place, and they were using property in the back for storing stuff. I can, I can imagine it's probably a difficult site to-
If there was a change of use, that would be one of the things that staff would require, and certainly, if they do anything with the property to the north, that has the fence around it, will require some sort of environmental analysis.
Remediation, I bet. How about city road projects? Any, any new paving projects going on, or resurfacing, overlays?
So, I've been on a few of the NPO meetings, and they are talking about some, some work along US One, and some stuff along Five Twelve. The problem right now, and it's a statewide problem, is, is that they're sort of underfunded for, for a lot of the road projects that they'd like to execute. So, as it stands now, they're sort of on the books. There's some stuff out there on the books, but there's only a few projects that I'm aware of that are sort of funded and, and sort of in the periphery. But there's a lot of other things in the, in the fray that, that they're talking about, but they're, they're just not going to be anytime soon. They're outside of the funding.
There were some projects on our capital improvement budget that wasn't that already budgeted for?
They may be budgeted for, I don't know.
For, for local roads, it's got to be, it's more of a public works, engineering. I definitely know that there's some road projects that were, that made it into the capital improvement for this budget year. I know that they're doing them in, in their district, certain roads. I know there's roads definitely have been paved already this year, or resurfaced. I do not know the ones that are scheduled for this next quarter. We certainly can get to that information if you need, Mr. Reyes.
Our stormwater swales, they're, they're being maintained, but very sporadically. So, we got the weather coming now again, so I'm just curious, do we still have somebody on contract to do that, or? You wouldn't know? No, we don't.
We don't know.
You don't know? That's, ask the question somewhere else?
Well, that's a little bit out of our, our wheelhouse, so.
Okay.
I have something under Commissioners Matters. Do we have anything in the works as far as a drone ordinance, controlling use of drones, where they can be used, where it's going?
That's already regulated, pretty tight.
So, it's regulated through the FAA. There are very strict rules about where they operate and the altitudes that they can operate. And because we have Sebastian Airport smack dab in the middle of town, I believe there's a exclusionary zone of a few miles in either direction-
Yeah.
-that preclude them from operating at a certain altitude. Now, that being said, there is some waivers, if you will, for drones under a certain size or a certain weight. So, the things that the kids are buying at Walmart, the, the small ones, they're probably exempt. But if you're flying a microwave oven, you're probably not exempt.
So, there's been some new changes to those rules, Mr. Roth, and I can tell you that a lot of people got grounded. So, they are watching. I know FPL has been doing inspections or pulls in our area with a drone. They have a sub working for them, I believe, but I have seen them flying in our area. Looks like a scary spider, flying spider. Anyhow.
I mean, are, are they permissible?
Yeah, well, the person flying it has to have the right license and permit, so.
It's a Part 107 license, is what they call it, and it's a special, it's a special certificate that they have to apply for and receive, so.
So, they can fly them in the city of Sebastian?
If they have a license and they're flying within FAA regulations, yes.
Doesn't mean they're going to fly in your backyard and snoop look in your pool.
Well, here's my, the, the point is, is they are very dangerous. And the only reason I, I bring it up is because where I live, well, Bassel Park, which is in the county, is behind me. And I have reported a couple of times when there've been drones over there flying, and they fly extremely fast, from one end of the park to the other. If they go out of control, it's pretty nasty.
And those are probably the ones he's talking about that aren't regulated, because I have seen some kids, when I'm out on the sandbar, using them off the boat, and they'll fly through, and they are pretty fast. They're scary, yeah. They can be dangerous.
And that's my whole point, is that they're dangerous, but is there any, any regulation or any ordinance we have, or any control, other than what's through the FAA?
I don't think, it would be Mr. Anon to answer that, but I don't think we can control that.
No, there's no ordinance or resolution passed by council specifically addressing drones. However, if you have an issue with drones, and your comment that you made, you saw one, my suggestion is, because I actually saw one over City Hall, and just call Scott Baker at the airport, and they'll get ahold of the FAA, because they're the one that regulates drones, period. Not us, not Scott Baker, just FAA.
Okay.
So, but they can't control, just again, for the record, like, like the chairman was saying, they cannot control, you know, these pirated ones that go out and do what they want. So, just fortunately, that we can control.
So, it's, it's more of an educational thing, what people can do if they feel they're being harassed, or if they're in jeopardy of some way, shape, or form, where they can go, how they can approach the whole situation. Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Good question.
Okay. Here and there over the years, now, I've just heard rumor of a five-year plan, and widening of Barber Street was brought up in that. And now, the city had plans at one time to widen Barber Street. I've had a few questions from folks that have moved into the area, and they're concerned as to whether or not this is going to happen. Is this something we just don't have the money to do, or we're just going to scrap it? Where do we stand with that?
I've not heard any, of any plan or anything regarding Barber Street being widened.
So, I'll tell them it's just a rumor, forget about it.
That was years ago.
Think you had the right of way there to do that.
That was years ago, but that's not-
Yeah, I, I know that, so when the publics at the end of Barber Street and US One came in, part of their off-site improvements, they did straighten out the road a little bit, and they paved all the way from US One, I believe, to Schuman, that way. But in terms of right of way, yeah, there's not right of way there. There's a small area where there were some scrub J lots. I know the county picked, purchased them for future, possibly, but nothing that's in the hopper now, that, that we're aware of, at least through our department.
Okay, and my only other request I had brought up earlier is that please, any more development down in that Schuman Drive area, should, we should be requesting a traffic impact analysis for that area over by Pelican Island Elementary School. We're just concentrating on what goes out to Route One right now, in the last Spirit of Sebastian. So, we need to take a look, because we're improving in that area. We're going to be adding traffic. So, we've got to have a handle on what's going to, what we have to do as a city, not just the developers. So, just a request. I'd appreciate seeing it. We already have an issue down at Five Ten and Sixty-Six, that's a traffic nightmare.
I think, as all of our subdivisions and part of our applications, we always require a traffic statement. If it is over four hundred trips per day, that is the threshold, that then requires a full traffic engineered analysis. And I know, I think you guys appreciate, we did give you at least the summary for Spirit of Sebastian, so, and any of our subdivision or type of where we do have that, we'll certainly give you that information. But it is something that we require, that gets reviewed by the city engineer, consulting engineers, you know, and they determine through that analysis if there's any additional turn lanes or widens, intersection improvements, traffic timing. That's all through the, through that analysis, and that's required in our code for any new application.
Okay, yeah, it's not just the school, you've got a daycare right across the street there also. So, how much traffic we're going to push south, as well as north, over there. Alright, thank you. That's it for me.
Just have one request. If staff could partly look into the, the hours of operation of the light that shines on the city sign out front. I know when we requested it, this been several years back now, Joe Griffin was in charge, and it was supposed to be operating during nighttime hours. And I'd travel all many odd hours, but mainly early, early in the morning, and it's always off. And it used to be on, but now it's no longer on. But I think our roads are always traveled, we need to have the light on, so that people can see different meetings and, and notations that are coming up in the city.
We'll, we'll give that over to the beatments and have them look into that.
Okay, thanks.
So, Mr. Roth started something with the, with the drones. My question is in reference to RC boats.
They're not regulated by the FAA.
I'm sorry?
They're not regulated by the FAA.
No, I, I realize that. Our, our parks have lakes, and they're are being used for these RC boats. I have one myself, an electric one, that I, I'll put in the lake in front of my house. But there has been more and more use of, more people getting these toys, and I'm curious about noise ordinance on those. The electric ones, just making a little whining sound, they're not too bad, but we do have one guy that comes out to the lake in front of our house. He's got like ten different ones, most electric, but he's got some really loud gas ones that he's running in our lake, dead. On a Sunday, early morning, it's, it's very annoying. I probably could just talk to the guy, and he would, you know, be courteous enough to not do it, but I was just curious, there is, we do have noise ordinance, right, but-
We do.
What would it be in reference to something like that? I mean, it's like a loud exhaust.
And I think under our nuisance code, there, it alludes to noise, but-
Integration noise.
It'd have to be, it'd have to be observed by the police or the code enforcement office, and then determined to be a nuisance.
Okay. And my other concern is, it is a fuel operating boat, two-cycle fuel with an exhaust, and I know these lakes, you're not supposed to put boats in them. So, is there rules in reference to that? Because he's using a two-cycle fuel there, sometimes alcohol fuel. I could smell it, and you can almost see the sheen in the water when he pulls up to the shore. So, I, I know there is some fuel through the exhaust.
Alcohol.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I'm just curious of that. I'm not trying to start any trouble. I just, I want to get a louder one, and I'll fix that, so.
[laughing]
I'm just curious, Mr. Anon, do our lakes, our, our park lakes, we're not allowed to have- our, our, our park lakes, we're not allowed to have, uh, gas boats in there. I don't even think they allow boats in there, right?
I, I don't have the answer to that question, nor if, nor if these lakes are within our jurisdictions. I don't think, uh, City Sebastian, uh, has jurisdiction per se in these lakes to govern boating, if that's what you're asking. I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Oh, so you're saying it's under some water districts jurisdiction?
Maybe. If it's, uh, uh, what, what's it called, the, uh, I, I, I'm not sure. Bottom line is, the answer to your question is, I don't have an answer, uh, if there's any kind of regulations for, uh, uh, fuel on these, on these rivers.
Yeah, like the regular alcohol, two-cycle alcohol, and that's all.
All right, I have no, no. Any other commissioner matters?
Um, just a point, uh, that drone, uh, situation in the county parks is illegal. I'm just curious if there's any way we can adopt it.
Call FAA. Where the airport, there you go. The airport will take care of it for you.
Okay.
All right.
Also major.
No further questions, commissioners? I'd like to adjourn the meeting.